There is a quorum.
Thank you. I guess we'll begin looking at the old business here as presented to you. We've got the minutes from the, thank you, minutes from the previous meeting. And has every council member had a chance to review these minutes?
Yes.
Give you a little time to go with those if you need more time. Anything there in the old minutes or old business that we need to discuss before moving forward?
I don't see anything.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We move into new business. Any council member have something that they need to bring up before we approve the bills?
Should we say and should we pray and say the pledge?
We certainly should. We certainly should. I'm gonna ask Jim, no, I'm not. I'm gonna defer to preacher she out there. And if you would say, say, give us a prayer, please. Would you all rise, please?
I thought I might be called on and I had an admonition from God's word that I would like to read to you. And I think they'll understand it.
I'd love to hear.
From Philippians, each of you should look not only to your own interests, but also to the interests of others. And that's why we're here. Father, thank you for the freedom that brings us together, the privilege of calling on your name without fear of reproach. Bless each of the council members and us as we stay filicent. We pray for a harmony in our concern for each other. And all of our town, we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Would you join with me in turning and approaching the flag, repeating, "Pledge allegiance"?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carpenter. I, I mean Ashley, I get my mind so full of other things. Sometimes it shuts out what needs to be done. So you have before you the bills. I give you some time to look through there and if you have questions.
This fuel seventeen hundred and ten dollars. Is that two weeks or?
That's thirty days.
Thirty days.
I had a question about the backhoe tires Mitch, that one was four hundred and forty and one was four hundred. You know why? There's a forty dollar difference in those. Are they just the way they were billed out? One was four forty?
You want to come look at it?
Yeah, let me see. I'm sure that's rear tires, but. Correct, two sixty. What, is it a different tire or something?
One of them have a disposal fee attached to it or something perhaps?
Forty dollar disposal fee though, and that's generally not that much.
For a rear tractor tire, that's probably not out of line.
Well, not out of line. I'm just wondering why we got, we approved four tires and we got two front that are similar and same price. Two back tires are a different price and I didn't know why.
By how much?
Forty dollars. So that would be roughly what, twenty-five percent?
Did you say that was a side of the disposal fee or?
I don't know. You might look at the.
Because I mean, they're both the same tire, so unless he put twenty dollars a tire. I'll have to ask him about that.
Yeah, find out for us if you would and. The, what are they on?
That's sir pick up that Chevy. That's two thousand Chevy pickup, long ride, regular cab.
Okay, so you put a disposal fee on this one, six dollars?
I'll, I'll talk to Carl and see.
Okay.
I will. I'll pull it out.
On this boat of sale, in Denver, it says lock and seals three thirty-four after the purpose of.
Meter, meter seals? Right. Lock and seals will be meter seals, I see.
Well, it's in one you gotta break off, looks like a.
Steven's standing ninety-five dollars.
Fire calls. Quarterly.
Oh, quarterly?
Yeah.
Any further questions about the, about the bills?
No.
Chair would entertain a motion to accept the bills as presented? We have a motion on the floor to accept the bills as presented. Do we hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Bills are approved. We're gonna move in then to the citizens' comments. Floor is now open. The chair will recognize anyone wishing to make comments and would request that you would hold your comments to three minutes if possible. So the floor is now open to the citizens. We have a young man here that looks like he wants to come forward to express some interest in a, some of our ordinances, I believe.
Yes, sir, I do.
Yes, would you, would you state your name, please, for the record?
I live on Francis Street. And it's just not on account of me, but the city ordinance on concealed carry, I don't think from Missouri law, carry in the, in the city is in court part of.
Right.
Because a lot of the states that says we can do and cities say we can't, and a lot of cities are deleting, their cities don't count it, it don't count law too. Like, there's no man on the side, on our side of town wants to carry a forty caliber around. And we're having a lot of problems on our street.
Right.
A lot of new people coming in town. Strangers that shouldn't be in town, strange cars. And he wants to carry around his revolver, which is an old military revolver. And according to city ordinance, you can't. Because concealed carry, you gotta have a concealed carry permit to carry at the farm.
Right.
Now, a lot of people has discontinued the concealed carry card because they don't work in law enforcement, or work with people in Springfield, you have to have.
Right.
Now, I'd like for the city to change some of the ordinances.
Okay, so specifically, Mr. Clifford, you want to see the city delete that? Part of the ordinance that would say that it's illegal to carry in the, in the city of Seymour?
Yes, sir. The other reason is too, the neighborhood watch, if you have a neighborhood watch in town, you gotta have something you need to carry in case. You know, you call the police, but the police department ain't always there all the time.
That's true.
I do think the people that do carry should have some kind of qualification. It's not just anybody.
Right.
Trouble is, you can't have it both ways. You can't require a qualification but exempt the qualification that is required currently.
Yeah, but if anybody that's in military or ex, what do you call it? Guard duty or.
Right.
National guard?
Yeah, anybody, anybody that's done anything like that, they know how to carry. They know all the rules. Well, a lot of them don't even know the rules and regulations.
I think, I'm no attorney, but I think the ordinance is still on the book. It hadn't been amended or deleted, omitted, if you will, since the Missouri state statute changed. I, I think, in my opinion, it's pretty cut and dry. It's either required to have a concealed carry permit or it's not. I don't think that you can start splitting hairs. And who makes the judgment call of who's qualified based on past experience or? I, I think it gets kind of muddy there. I think you just need to follow state statute, in my opinion.
Well, here's what I've done. I've, I've asked our city attorney to review our ordinance because we talked about this. And so Paul, would you like to?
I can speak to it a little bit.
Yes.
I did pull it up and I think Grady's correct that basically when the state law changed, the ordinance just hasn't been updated to reflect the new state laws on concealed carry. Specifically, two ten point eight four oh, just needs some modifications made to it to tie it to chapter five hundred, five seventy-one of state statutes. So it's, I mean, it's not a huge deal. We just need to update our ordinances to reflect that. Some stuff needs to be stricken, some stuff needs to be expanded to comply with some of the changes in chapter five seventy-one of Missouri statutes.
In, in reference to Clifford's question about carrying, this is open carry. Is that right?
Open carry, because I don't believe we can deal with.
Right, it's open carry, so.
And that would need to be stricken. If you follow the state law, the section six of two ten eight four, you would take that out, which is openly carry firearm or any other weapon readily capable, we could use within city limits. But then modifications would need to be made to the introduction and then sections one, three of two ten eight forty to tie it to the requirement of state law, which is chapter five seventy-one. So I mean, there would be changes made to what we've identified as one, three, and six of section two ten point eight four oh of the here in Seymour city code.
So what, what we're hearing, I think, is our city attorney saying that the ordinance needs to reflect state law. And that's what you're saying, is that state law allows you to do that. And I think what I hear, Mr. Cliff.
That is what I'm saying, just not in that simple way. We, we just need to make the ordinance marry up with what state law is.
Right.
Are you saying we can or we can't?
Well, as of right now, this ordinance is still on the books. But once we get an ordinance drafted, having it be in compliance with the state statutes, then that'll be passed and.
How long will that take to do that?
Good question.
Because a lot of times I know how it takes slow years to do this.
Well, if the council would, if the council would direct me, I could have an ordinance change on who's next.
You need a motion? We do. I'll make it.
Simply to, simply that the ordinance reflects state statutes.
Right, right.
We're not, we're not going into the fuzziness of we're gonna determine who's qualified and who's not and all that.
City ordinance will be the same thing as state statute. What's your last name?
Which makes it lawful to carry openly or concealed.
Yes.
Now, concealed carry, now that right there, now I never, I have had a car before, but I don't need it for any more than what I do.
Currently in the state of Missouri, you don't have to have one.
But a lot of people in, in the city, they don't know about these ordinances. Half the people in town's carrying concealed all the time, which is against the law, but still. They don't know the ordinances. They don't know half of this.
Well, here, here's what's on the floor. We have a motion on the floor to amend the city ordinance to reflect the state law, which would give you a positive answer to can you carry? And open, open carry, and that's correct. So I need a second on that. We have a second. Any further discussion?
Are you the one wanting to carry, Clifford?
No, I carry all the time. I used to. Now, I don't concealed carry no more, because I don't believe in it.
You think we need somebody carrying a gun on Francis?
Well, yes, sometimes, because we got some un.
Because I live on the same street.
Yeah, I know you live down the street from me. I know I knocked on your door today and I was gonna.
I wasn't there. I was in a meeting in Marshfield.
But there's a lot of new people coming in town. A lot of stuff is disappearing.
Yeah, there is.
And foul languages coming from some, one of a couple of cars, which we're trying to get, you know, find out who it is. And they're from people from out of town.
Okay. What you need to do, in my opinion, and you can verify with our police officer, if you can get a license plate number.
I'm trying to.
Because that's what I'm trying to do.
Because they're getting rougher and rougher on that side of town and it ain't right.
Get license plate number. Make and model car?
I've got the make and model. I just don't have my license plate number.
Have you reported any of that to the police department?
Yes, I did.
What we're discussing here, okay, you're aware.
Oh, yeah, we talked a few times.
And here.
We know each other very well. I mean, I don't.
Mr. Keely posing the question, can you openly carry? We've asked Mr. Link to review our policy, our statute, and it does reflect old, old laws and not the new law. It does not mirror the new law. So we're gonna rewrite that. We've got a motion on the floor to rewrite the ordinance to reflect the state statute, which would give you a positive answer to your question as soon as this is done. Now, to say when it's done, we have a motion on the floor and a second. We're gonna vote here in just a minute. And if that's voted on and it passes, and seems like it will, then it would be as soon as Mr. Link can draft that model ordinance for us to come before us.
And I can have it by next meeting.
So that can be, can we vote on that at next meeting then?
Yep.
So we could vote on that at the next meeting. So where's the next meeting date?
Twenty. Seven.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty, the twenty-sixth. It could be as early as the twenty-sixth.
That's fine. That's what I wanted to get out. I mean, I wanted that one to be out in the open and, you know, my feelings about it. To help the neighborhood and everybody. I don't know about this side of town over here, but that side of town over there, you can't watch all those people. Too many people coming in.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. Keely?
No, that's fine.
We appreciate your coming, appreciate your coming forward and visiting with the council about that. I have a motion on the floor and a second. No further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, bye. I need to go.
Yeah, very good. Thanks for coming, Mr. Keely.
Thanks, Clifford.
Don't forget your cap there. Are there any further comments now from the citizens?
Uh, yeah, I'll give one. I hope that Scott makes it a point to pay close attention to Clifford. Because the last thing we need is him carrying a sidearm, controlling Francis.
That's right.
Well, true.
He thinks he's the law now. That whole conversation is right.
Yeah, well.
But the ordinance, but the ordinance still needed to be checked.
I'm just saying, you kind of declared his intentions before this council, which was, we're lobbying about people coming into town. What's he gonna do, shoot them? I mean.
Well, see, I told him, get a license plate number, get the make and model of the car.
The streets and other people's yards and police. I mean, that's like his yard. He can patrol his domicile. He doesn't need to be walking on public streets thinking he's patrolling and confronting people.
No, true, no.
In reference, neighborhood watch, but.
There is no neighborhood watch.
So that's just my guess.
Do you want to form one? Do you want to form neighborhood?
No, I don't want to.
Point well taken, point well taken. I think that the only thing we're attempting to do in what he presented was correct. We do not mirror state law, but we soon will. So, and yes, we need to, I don't.
He and I had a few discussions.
I would imagine so.
I'm aware and we will.
Very good.
Not anybody that needs that.
Very good, Sergeant. We appreciate you and the work that you do. All right, are there any other comments from the citizens? Seeing none, we'll move on into the police report. Sergeant Scott.
Well, really not a whole lot. Just something we've got, in the last month, answered a hundred and sixty calls for service. Had four accidents in town. Seems like we're having a lot of accidents around sixty and Division Street over here.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what's going on there. We've had two within just a couple of days right there.
Not paying attention.
I think there's people not paying attention.
That's right.
For about twenty summonses, gave out about sixty warnings, about thirty-six cases we filed at the prosecutor's office. Other than that, we're just, you know, just keep going twenty-four hour.
You bet.
I pray so.
Are there any changes down there at Division and sixty? Any, any changes have been made down there?
No, no, there's nothing down there.
People just aren't paying attention.
I know they're coming from a, the one team moved across from out of county and across sixty and got hit, and one more going the other way and got hit.
So it doesn't make, so it's not a pattern?
No, it's not really. It's just, it seems like there was a lot of them recently.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Kinway, why's up?
I've got, I don't know if it's a question or not, but Keith Kornelson was in this Ford Eclipse. And he would like a hundred and forty dollars for four sets of uniforms. He thought it should come out of the police department. There's something about his uniforms was in a car at his house and he couldn't get them out.
Okay, I, I told him he had to talk to the lady about that, between the two of them.
And, and he's having trouble with the insurance, getting insurance on that. You know, she wrecked that vehicle because the title was TOD, but didn't have his wife's name on it. And he's having a trouble getting insurance on that.
So do you have a suggestion or motion, Councilman Chris?
He'd like a hundred and forty dollars for his uniforms. Or is there any way you could get them out of? I don't even know where that vehicle's at.
I don't know where the vehicle's at, but that would be, if she's got his uniforms, that would be her fault.
Well, she is in the hospital. She's been in hospital.
Yeah, if she wouldn't let him have his uniforms, that, that would be her responsibility to pay him.
Well, he said he wanted to get them out that day and he wouldn't let him.
I, I didn't not let him. I told him it was between them. That was something they had to work out.
Sounds like a civil issue rather than soon as responsible.
We, we visited with our council on that and it is a civil issue. And really, we shouldn't endeavor to settle those things, so that's correct. So, Councilman Chris, what do you want to?
You know, I don't know what to do. He just sent and talked to me about it, so I don't, you know, I don't know. I don't know if the police has any funds to pay for anything like that, or what do you think, Scott? We should or what? I don't know.
Like I said before, she has his uniforms. Or if they're in the vehicle still, she should still be able to get them, and if not, she's the one who has his uniforms, so.
What's the story here? Somebody give me some background. What's the story here?
Is the vehicle at an impoundment or I mean?
Well, let me, let me see if I.
It was right outside the city. I don't know.
It was.
What was the police involved? Why are, why are we?
It was a dispute between two people over the vehicle that I went to one day.
Like, who's got to happen?
Well, here, here's the crux to the situation. The fellow who actually hold title to the property, the vehicle, is out in nursing home. His brother has been assigned durable power of attorney to direct his financial affairs, and so he had the vehicle at his house. Evidently, it's, it's kind of a, an estranged wife situation. And she wanted the vehicle from the private residence. And, and we, we got it for her. I say we, the police department went down and, and caused Tim to give that to his sister-in-law. And she, she wrecked the vehicle and totaled it, and his uniforms were in it. So, but now I believe, Councilman Chris, he had told me that the uniforms are gone.
Yeah.
They're not in there anymore.
Yeah, no, he said they're not in there.
So that's pretty well the crux to the issue. Now he wants the city to pay. Say again?
Sister-in-law.
Sister-in-law.
And his brother's in the nursing home.
But no, he, it's his brother.
Yeah.
Yeah.
His brother's in the nursing home.
Right.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Right.
Right. Carl's in the nursing home.
Okay, Carl's in the nursing home, Carl's there.
Right.
Yes.
And his wife, and the wife's.
But it wasn't title, yeah. Yeah, but her name wasn't on the title. Her name wasn't on the title.
But it wasn't, it wasn't.
But it doesn't matter if they're brothers and sisters twice or four times over. It's between them and the city has no fiduciary responsibility.
City doesn't have a, have a, have a dog in that hunt, so to speak, so. Well, not. You know, I would, I would hesitate to ask Mr. Link a question on that, unless it was in closed session. So we're at a point where we, we don't know where the uniforms are at. He's asking for money to, or to replace the uniforms. I don't know if we can give him any answer, except that. I don't know if we can give him any answer, except that there are no funds available through the police department.
I don't even think that's the right answer.
No, no, we don't have, not any of our business.
Well, that's true.
I think that sends the wrong message if that's the response.
If I had a wheelbarrow stolen out of my yard, I could come down here and say, you know, Scott wouldn't know that I'm patrolling. I want my, I want my personal wheelbarrow.
Right.
I mean, you, you're a woman, you can't worry about reversing people, stuff that you have no legal liability.
You wouldn't have that problem if Clifford was in your neighborhood.
Yeah, he can have it.
And the only thing I would say is that...
He lives on the same side of the street as I do, at the other end.
It's a civil matter.
Close to, you know, a little bitty house.
Any other questions or comments?
Little bitty house. He lives in that one.
Anything else for, uh...
No.
Sergeant Dinwiddie? All right, then we'll accept your report. We appreciate it. I will ask for Supervisor Mitchell Plummer.
Working a little on that water line last week, this week. We've been working on it trying.
Can you, uh, can you give us a approximation time, Mitch, when, when that's gonna be completed?
Not really. I mean, I don't know what comes up between...
You know, I noticed that, uh, that we didn't work on it last Friday.
We were working on...
Right. Work, you guys were working on the poles, I know. But we didn't, didn't work on that project last Friday at all. Right. And, and Putt, I know, got shots in his, his back. And, but we did work some on the sidewalk project. Okay, uh, any questions for...
Said the hydraulic line was busted. You couldn't get it fixed here in place, the hydraulic line?
Yeah, one was on the transmission. It had a, it was sitting there and it broke off. It had a lot of metal in that hydraulic, but he was under warranty, so, you know, since it's still under warranty, putting stuff is not getting back on it, so...
Now, how did we...
Even though we broke it, I mean, it was our fault it broke. Push and brush.
Okay, so we, we broke it. It didn't, no, it wasn't faulty line. We, we broke it.
We broke it because people take stuff to brush by all they, you know, they don't get very close to brush. We gotta push brush up, and then probably fix brush.
Hit it and broke it off, okay.
So will that be warranted?
No, could we broke it?
No, it was a, wasn't a faulty line. It just, we, we broke...
Cause I make hydraulic holes, and I think you do, don't you, Joe? Make hydraulic holes?
Potentially the transmission, hub, that's why they lack the transmission.
Well, we got that too.
But there are men, though, that are under warranties. I mean, you know, if we had put the wrong thing in, it's like a dump.
So, so what you're saying that...
Hydraulic system, you put the wrong thing in there.
Yeah, but we got them from all kinds, you know.
Well, if it was a faulty hose, I guess, but this is a warranty issue, so that the, the hole is all still under warranty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tractor's still under warranty.
All right. I think I understand that, then. You have to go back with, uh, with, if, if John Deere makes it in order to keep your warranty?
Cat.
Or cat, yeah.
I mean, they just don't wanna do anything that causes warranty to...
To be voided, okay? But other than that, we, we can rebuild the holes in town. Okay.
Or I can fit this one.
Right. Anything else, Mitch? Any questions for Mitchell?
President?
So, you don't know, have any idea when the water line will be complete down there?
I mean, if stuff tears up...
Yeah.
You know, there's things, you know, it would be...
Yeah.
In the next couple of weeks.
Some trouble was good.
But he's also got, uh, uh, two water tanks he's got due. For the ones for, uh, very prior, and he's got two or three water tanks over here, so that's gonna take two days out of it, so...
Right, yeah, I knew this one was coming up. Uh, Clouders, did we find his water line?
We found where it's gonna come across. It wasn't where, but not as bad.
Ah, okay. Are we, uh, putting those things in our GPS system so that they'll be designated, uh, so we'll go right, right to the point next time?
Yeah, but we will.
Right, okay. We haven't, but we're...
But we will.
We will, okay. Any other questions?
Did they give you any kind of hint when the new, new poles will be here?
Well, I called, got one bid, I can't get the other two. And I called him that night, so...
For some of the poles.
I haven't seen it, no.
I would imagine they're probably playing catch-up, huh?
No, I imagine.
But one bid, I can't pass the dollar.
They're probably gonna cost a lot more now than they would for all the stones, but you don't think so?
Yeah, there, there's a bill in there. We, I, I saw a bill in there today for nine thousand eight hundred and some dollars, and I asked about it, and they said it was poles. So, uh, so we've ordered poles. We just evidently don't have them in yet.
I liked it. I guess it's been one of the things since I've been here.
There you go. That's, that's one that I saw today. Nine thousand, and I was mistaken, nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. And is this on, on which, which portion of the pole?
You ever tried Baldwin Piling Company?
No.
Write, write their information down, and try them next time you have trouble.
Are these just bids?
Yeah, they're just bids.
Yeah.
Oh, these are bids? We haven't ordered any?
No.
Okay, so we got one bid for ninety-nine seventy-seven.
Thirty-five poles in there.
And one bid's a couple hundred bucks, nine, ninety-seven fifty-one.
But I could give color. Check Baldwin, Baldwin Piling Coal Company. They're out in Bayou, Alabama. They use original growth timber, and it's proven to be twice as strong as far as the durability and longevity of it.
Got a lot of pine in Alabama.
They're usually just as competitive too.
So we got two, two bids evidently. And anything else for Mr. Plummer? Of course, my inclination on that, Mitch, is to take the cheapest bid. But if this Alabama firm might, might even be cheaper than what we're looking at here, looks like there's a couple hundred dollar difference here.
I think, uh, I think the decision was that you, you would gather the information that you need, and you could execute it without further permission.
That's, that's correct.
Whenever you're comfortable with, with a bid and delivery, you just make the decision.
Yeah, you, you've got approval. I looked at the minutes, fifteen thousand dollars. But this is all the poles that this has been on, what we talked about at the last meeting?
As for one load, that's...
Oh, okay.
Essentially bring our stock back up where it ought to be.
Very good. And we're using poles now to build out, right? How many have we used, Mitch? Ju- just for that build out, for that three-phase?
They can only get so many pounds. Some trucks weigh different amounts, so they'll be, you know, two or different.
How many?
You can look at your unit...
Seven poles.
Get a, a little better idea. I'm guessing Bridwell's probably just a touch higher. Cause they're more of a broker, aren't they? Are they still a broker, Bridwell?
They don't have, they have a yard, yeah? To give everybody an up, upgrade here and update, this, these are just, uh, bids that we've submitted to these two companies that, and we've got numbers on those now. So, uh, ninety-seven and ninety, what, five?
Ninety-nine and ninety-seven.
Ninety-nine and ninety-seven, couple hundred dollar difference. Any further questions? Okay, we'll move on in then to, uh, Mr. Smith's report.
Can I also get that copy of my report? There's not a whole lot here this time. We've been hyper-focused on the sidewalk down there, trying to get that done. We poured two hundred and eleven feet up so far. Our biggest obstacle was that first drive there, you know, storage units. Get across that, because we can't close them both at the same time. And because of the depth of the concrete, we had to let it cure, you know, for a handful of days, so, so we, we crossed that first drive. We've opened it back up. So, so the process should, should pick up a little bit now. We're still with it for a minute. We're hoping to have that done by the end of the month.
So you've, uh, it looks like you've poured an additional hundred and thirty-one feet?
Yes.
Okay, you're making good progress.
Yeah, we are, the three guys, yeah, we're clipping right along my face.
And who's the fellow that's a concrete finisher, working with you down there? Yeah, Stephen Pogue, and who's the other fellow?
Toby Sanders.
Toby, okay. Yeah, he's, he's the major finisher, so...
So you don't think Maudox is gonna do anything to that nothing there till next summer?
No, yeah, I'll follow up to, you know, questions you guys had last board meeting. I contacted Wes from Maudox, and he heard a lot about that, maybe. I mean, he didn't laugh on my face, but he just, it's just not enough to really be concerned about. It's not high-speed areas.
It's not. Right there, you should've asked him why it wasn't...
Well, it's not a high speed, in the middle of a four-way stop.
Yeah, but you gotta run over it.
They've got a, they've got a, they've got a spot that they're gonna grind next summer. They said when they do it, they'll look at doing this one also. But, I mean, for right now, it's, it's a no, and I'm gonna do anything about it right now.
Could be a long winter, though.
What did Mr. Billings say? Did he say any plans he had with this building?
Yeah, yeah, I talked with, talked with Landon, and, uh, and I, I took him a permit packet over there, and, and told him that, you know, any work he does, he doesn't need get permits for it, and, uh, I asked him what he planned on doing with the other building. And, uh, he wanted to know what he could do with it. His, his intention was to, to put a small office space up front and an apartment in the back to rent out. So I printed off, uh, our ordinances for, for B one, and took him a copy of that. So he would kind of know what he was allowed to do, but that, that's what he has in mind, or what he told me, is what he's got in mind for that building. But he knows he'll have to build a new back wall, put a new roof on it.
The back wall is what, you know, concerns me, because we, it almost needs a ribbon across there, because bricks are exposed down about half the wall. Well, maybe not quite half, but, and then it just looks like it could fall.
Yeah, and any, the, the impression I got was nothing's gonna be anytime in the near future. This is down the road.
Okay, well, we, we may need to look at that, Mr. Burton, to see if, uh, because it, it, it's a health hazard. It is in its present condition, if, uh, it looks to me like it could fall, but it's been there a while, so... But they've removed some of the bricks out of it, too.
Not on that one, though.
Not on that back wall, maybe. Uh, and I noticed that we read meters eleven and twelve. Are all the meters red? No. So what do we do? We read them every day till they're red, or how, how do we? So we got somebody reading the meters every day? Okay.
Yeah, the meters on eleven, twelve is just meters that I read.
Okay.
We had this time, because of clean, cleanup, we had to read meters, and somebody had to watch the cleanup, and then we switched off. We've been doing shifts to kind of clean up.
Now, the, uh, the trash, i- is that, is that, does it go to Sunday?
Yes.
So it will all day Sunday?
Yeah.
Okay. I was asked that question. I couldn't answer it, but that will, because, uh, some of the young people where I go to church might be interested in helping with anybody who would call in to ask for assistance. Do you know, Sam, if we have a list of people that have called?
I don't know if any.
Okay. Possibly they don't know that they could get assistance if they needed that.
Well, most of them know. If they got something, they'll weigh it out, but they come over and ask it. You know, if it's some old person that don't have no way to go over, you know, we'll run back over or something, or go over and get it for them. But I mean, most of them, if they do, they can...
But you know, Mitch, uh, the church groups will do that, too, and, uh, and, and the FFA, uh, that was brought to my attention at school. And it's part of their educational process, isn't it? You'd know about that better than I would.
But I mean, you know, we get it done for them anyway.
Right, right.
But I know that there's some people, you know, that comes over and tells us, you know, if anybody needs, you know, it's got better stuff.
Well, Mr...
Nobody's come over and listened to that one.
Mr. Poe works at the school, and he's also on our new zoning commission. So, uh, he, uh, he suggested, or that young man's there with him, that FFA had one of the requisites to do community projects like that. And it helps them in their, their work for whatever it is they're trying to achieve. So, uh, we just need to keep that in mind, maybe not for this year, but certainly for next year. And line those folks up and let them be ready to, and we could put an ad in the paper and, uh, let citizens know that that's available to them. Anything else for anyone, either of these men? Thank you, Chuck. We're moving on in then to our city administrative support, Mr. Burton.
You have my reports already, and then I also brought in the three quotes on the thing Mary asked me to run.
Which one does he, uh, has Todd looked at this?
Oh, yeah. He's involved in that. Him and John Rick, they did that.
Which one do they think?
Well, as I told you a while ago, they'd like...
Because if they're gonna be the ones to use it, they know.
They'd like to have this one with everything with it, the case and all of that, but now, you pointed out that one of these others might have a case.
This one has a case also, or appears, appears to, like here, it's sort of a picture of things like this. But they would know more about that than we would.
Okay.
Because they're gonna be the ones to use it.
Okay, in any case, we're gonna be spending...
Yeah.
About sixty-eight, a hundred dollars, just a little less than seven dollars. So I, I'm, I'm gonna need a...
The one, the one that, if I was looking correctly, the one that they requested was seventy-four.
Yes, it is. And this one's sixty-eight, and this one's just about the same, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. So just whatever you guys think, I mean...
Kind of agree with Mary if it's, if it's they who will be utilizing this piece of equipment. I think their discretion would, uh, would heavily weigh on us, in my opinion. They may know something about it that we don't, that gives that only extra four, five hundred dollars of value, perhaps. I don't know.
What did we spend? What did it cost us to have it located? I thought last month we was talking about, you know, when you brought, first brought this up, how much had we spent?
No, it's free. Are you talking about the water location?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do. It's a free service. Missouri Water does.
So then why do we need one?
But do they?
They didn't find anything they were looking for.
So will we with this? Will we with this? Will we be able to find it with this?
That's what he said.
Why couldn't they find it? Yeah.
They locate everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's not just the water pot that locates.
What do you use currently to comply with Missouri One call, under-locate?
A radio, radio, radio phone, I mean, I just.
But this will take care of all of that, we won't even have to call one call.
No, we, we are responding for one call, is what I was referring to. When we respond, when somebody else calls one call, we go out and locate the utilities.
But this would help.
I mean, this is for our own and, you know, one call too. So I mean, see, we're not a member of like that US One Call. You know, we don't pay them to locate ours, we can locate our own.
Every department we have to use this.
Did I see that right, and maybe not all of them, but the GPS capabilities integrated with the GIS system?
Yes, that's right, that's another reason for the, for the one that said equal. We're not sure we have that capability and, and the equipment.
It'd be a lot of added value, just to.
Save a lot of time.
The accuracy of that.
I think that they should be the ones to, Todd and John should be the ones to decide because they know what we need exactly. I mean, that's just my thoughts.
I still need an okay from you guys to do it.
Well, in my opinion, would, would this work, this would be utilized in the electric, ground-to-ground utilities as well, right?
It could be, yeah.
So if it, if it will, will in fact be beneficial to the electric department, the sewer department, and the water department, that cost could be shared amongst the three.
Yeah.
And I think that there would be enough, surely, we're pretty early into the budget year, in maintenance supplies to, to cover that, if you split that up between the departments with.
I think that would make more sense.
I think if it's a pleasure of the council, then I think it's a good, but I do think it's a good idea. We'd have, it's not just a one-time thing, you'd have it to use it multiple times. Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we go with buying this.
Subs, sir.
Yeah, and let, and let John and Todd make the final decision which one, because like I said, they'll be the ones who uses it ultimately.
Second?
We have a motion on, on the floor in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none?
I'll let you know next time.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries, so move forward with it.
The only other thing I have is the shrubbery at, at the library is dying. It's diseased, it's twenty-two, twenty-four years old, I don't know how old it is, but it's really old.
Just whenever the library was built.
Yes ma'am, same stuff. The only thing that's surviving is the two trees that are over there. So I've had a quote from this guy, who's the guy that does all of our work here in town. And it looks like it's about twenty-seven hundred dollars to replace all the shrubbery around the library. That may be something we wanna wait on until, you know.
So you're gonna get two, couple more bids, or any more bids?
Uh, no, I didn't get any more bids, I really, I don't know who I would go to, to be honest with you, but I could do that.
Roger's, Willa Gardens up there. Yeah, Roger'sville, yeah.
Who?
Roger'sville, like Willa Gardens.
Right.
And Roger'sville.
Alright.
They do that sort of thing also.
That's all I got.
Very good, any questions for Sam?
You put on, mind you, that there's several unhappy workers here at the city hall, are there being more, are they not so unhappy?
I really don't know how to answer that. They're still upset over the time change, and I think that's been dealing that way for a while. So, that's why I've been out in the field so much, is that it's not that niche and Chuck can't get the work done. It's just, I just need to be there to help.
How about, did you get bids for the, the pea gravel or whatever out itself?
I've, I've got the one bid, but I haven't got any more bids, and, and I hadn't intended on getting any. I'm closer to do the project, so I don't wanna get bids now.
What are those bids?
That have the price change already.
When do you think we'll get to that project?
Grass is all rolled up in that.
And that park is embarrassing as its ever been.
We've got this sidewalk out here next.
Yeah.
And we've got to get that fixed. Tony's already been in my office about some lady that nearly turned over a wheelchair out there in one of his offices. So, we've got to get that done. I, I, I mean, I know that delays everything, but I really don't have a choice there unless you tell me differently.
Well, we don't need all of it.
No ma'am.
Yep. Well, could we go ahead and get the bids and then kind of have it all ready to do when you did get the sidewalks?
Sure, they may change, they may change by the time we.
Sort of won't be that long. Kinda know what we's looking at.
Alright.
We have everything else except, I can get everything else for pea gravel?
Yes, we've got everything else, yes.
I believe the one bid I had was, I think it was one three hundred dollars.
I think we already approved the purchase of it, I think, I think that could be an internal issue that once you determine who's gonna be the best supplier, just get it coming up. Think that it would be necessary to wait on the next council meeting to, to report back the bids that you've got. I think, I think you used that discretionary figured out.
A lot of people use that.
We've got a request to get that work done, so yes, Mr. Burton, move forward on that. Anything else? Yes, Mary.
Are we going to, have we done anything on that ordinance that gives indefinite employment?
Good question. We talked about revising the ordinance that would change the terminology so that it would not be an indefinite employment. Am I under the impression, I am under the impression that this office job or for Shelley Miller would be a permanent hire?
I don't see why.
Would it not be, or would it be?
You can terminate, you don't even have to have cause, but you can fire them at will at any point. I don't know why we have to renew somebody's position annually or biannually or anything. I, I don't, I don't see the need for it, I think, I think you hire somebody and as long as they're doing their job, they've got the job. I don't think there needs to be terms put on a customer service representative in the office.
However, we do have, I think, in our ordinance, that some positions are hired with an indefinite timeframe. And other positions may not be.
Do you know which ones those are listed?
It's all the appointed positions.
Well, that's what I saw.
Yeah, police chief, city attorney, Sam I.
Judge.
So that this would not, Ms. Miller would not fall underneath that?
I do think when you hit a flag.
Very good, very good.
What, you're gonna get a card for us all to sign?
I'll get that. I'll bring it back tomorrow for you.
Okay, and there was.
Raise the money to pay for the gun?
We, we have got money to pay for the gun, yes we have. So we've done good. Alright, if there's nothing, Sam, I'll, I'll move into my report then. Shelley Miller, we've just been talking about Shelley, has submitted her resignation. She's gonna terminate her employment with the city on the twenty-seventh, I believe, is that right, Sam? So, I don't know that we need to accept her resignation, but as, as a matter of formality, we can do that. So the chair would recognize a motion to accept Shelley's resignation at this time. We have a motion on the floor to accept her resignation in a second.
You said it was the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
Did we accept that resignation at the next meeting? I don't guess there'd be any reason not to do it now, but.
The twenty-seventh, yeah, we could.
Other than the fact that I, you know, I visited with her this afternoon and it all looks like to me it's, it's nothing that involves employees other than discussion about what they're gonna do or not gonna do. And she was offered actually a better opportunity with the Double Eagle Rock Quarry where she had previously worked. And so she accepted that, but she wanted to try to stay and ask us for some additional monies. And since we have a moratorium on wages at this time, she went back to those people and indicated that she was trying to do that and stay here with us. They upped their ante even more. So she, she's going. And so there's no need, I don't suppose, to put it off to the next meeting and unless whoever made the motion wants to rescind it, I mean, it's, it's up to the council.
There's a first and a second right now.
We have a first and a second, yes, but it's time for discussion. And Councilman Bennett has proposed that. Is it your pleasure to wait till the next meeting, or you wanna carry on with this and get it done? I mean, I, I don't think there's any question, I don't think there's any question about her going. We could always go back and, and amend the motion at a later time. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor in a second, any further discussion?
I think what Grady had in mind is, it would be kinda nice the night before she left to just accept her resignation then and present her plaque to her and everything.
Well, we, we.
But it doesn't make many difference, it doesn't matter to me.
I think we're doing that in essence, Jim, now. We're saying that we're not recognizing her resignation till the twenty-seventh, that's her last day. So it's just making it a formal thing.
We should.
So, that, you, you wanna make that a, who, who made the motion? Nadine, do you wanna amend that motion to say that you want a plaque made for her to be tendered at her last day? I think that's good. Okay. So we have the motion amended to say that we will give her a plaque. Any further discussion?
Costs associated with that, I would be happy to chip in.
Yes.
I think all of us would, so. She's, she's been a good employee. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. You know, we had a really great discussion with, with this fellow from, and I can't even pronounce, I know the acronym, but from the electrical supply company off of the grid that we buy power from at the present time. And we talked about our PPA, and we're gonna talk about that further, I think, at our next meeting. But we discovered something in that that is really good to make this thing work efficiently. And this report that they had given to us actually indicates that we generate the PPA. It's not the power company at all, it's the city that generates the PPA. Now, there's formula for doing that, and I think that when we feed those numbers into our system, it gives us the PPA for that month. Because the cost vacillates, or our cost doesn't vacillate, it, it is a constant. We, we elected to take a constant rather than the variable and to ride the wave up and down as the provider would give to the city. So there's a way that other cities have went about rectifying and solving these rates. And that is with a, a utility commission. Now, what this utility commission would do at the direction of the council is they would give you a tractor run on every year and set the rate. Set the rate at the most desirable rate. And to look at studies such as the one that we looked at the other day, when we, Yule, is that his, that fellow's name, what was it?
Yule.
Yule. Yes, Mr. Yule, and he's very knowledgeable. And what we're, what we're doing now is we're metering each place that uses electricity for the city. For instance, the water treatment plant, the wells that we have in the city, the old city hall.
Which we've all.
This, this building.
That's not a new process, that's always been done.
Correct, correct. And according to Mr. Yule, it's, it's the least that we could do. But, so there's a process by which that we can get good answers to this thing. So what, what the chair would propose to you at this time is we might look at a utility commission. It would be composed of five members from the community, these would be business people of different walks of life in the community, so to give you a wide spectrum like our planning and zoning commission. And so in this commission, we would afford them the opportunity to set the rate. And we would review that on a quarterly basis, but this utility commission would review and set the rate. So my recommendation to you as the council would to be a motion to elect a utility commission to take this job of the PPA and these other things and let this commission compose to these people to look at this thing from a practical standpoint and to generate those numbers for us.
Oh, let's wait until the next meeting when we can have him here and talk to him, where we can find out as much as we can about it before we jump in.
Do you, my question would be, do you know, not only in the state of Missouri, but in the United States as a whole, of any fourth-class city that operates its own utility that has a commission?
We used to have one here, didn't we Dan, that used to have one here?
We used to have one.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We've had one here in the past, in fact, I think if you review this, this survey that we had done, this study that we did, at the cost of the city of about twenty thousand dollars, am I correct on that? The recommendation is, that's the direction we need to go in. So, my suggestion to you is to follow the advice of these folks that did this study and go about finding these people in the community. There would be five members, is the way I would see it. We would be appointed by the mayor and approved by the council.
They also are the same folks that proposed and suggested and prepared and structured our current rate structure in PPA, these are the same folks. So we, we taking their advice or we not taking their advice?
Well, that's, that, my point, Mr. Bennett, is to take their advice, to set and order a utility commission and take this burden off of the city council and put this to a commission that would study this from a business standpoint, from a practical standpoint for the, for the needs of the city, for the whole city, and give us those numbers that we need to operate by.
I'm not saying that I'm against it, I'm just saying in two weeks, this, Mr. Yule, whatever his name is, I can't remember his name, is supposed to be here, I, I think we need to quiz him, we need to find out, we need to have it, we need to educate ourselves as much as we can before we make the decision.
He's not committed to coming?
No, but he, but we're gonna try to get him, or that was my understanding.
Well, he's been here, what did he spend with us, Sam?
Two or three hours.
Yes. And we, we quizzed him on, on this study and I basically scanned it as we were talking and asked him several direct questions, as did the others in that meeting, to find out what his advice would be. And so, i- if you want to handle this thing the way they think it needs to be handled, this is the way to go. And whether he shows up again or not, I, I'm not sure, Jim.
I, you know what, right now, we are handling it the way we were told it was done.
Yeah, I understand that things didn't do like he suggested though, things went higher than what he suggested, the way I.
Actually, if you read his proposal, the rate should. Actually, if you read his proposal, the rate should be increased and the PPA decreased. The revenue would essentially remain about the same. It's just how he split it.
And the cost to the citizen will remain the same.
And the PPA should never be over one cent. So, and I can tell you that I don't think I have my sheet here with me tonight, but it's run as high as two and a quarter and even higher. 2.55, I think, was the highest that I saw on this year's call.
It's per kilowatt hour, not percent. I know it's been two.
Uh... So, I don't think I have it.
Our five-year average is one something, so, you know, over five years, or the last few years, it's been a little more.
No, I left that part of my paperwork at home at desk at the house. So I don't have that with me. But anyway, it has gone much higher than you want.
Well, it hurts to have a board like that. We don't always have to go with them.
We wouldn't necessarily have to go with their suggestion, but they would set the rate. If we give them the power to address this thing, then it's going to be comprised of people that you approve. It would be a five-member board that I would appoint to you. If you don't agree with those folks, then we don't have to appoint those folks. But as I understand the way the thing would need to work, if the mayor would appoint, and that would need to be a part of the motion. But we do not necessarily have to do it tonight. It's the pleasure of the council. But it is... My recommendation to you, after talking with this man for two hours, to do what the educated man said we need to do.
I thought our next meeting was supposed to be about the PPA, to educate ourselves.
It is. It's a budget meeting.
Take the advice of Yule. We're going to comprise a board of five more people to contradict the advice of Yule or challenge the advice of... Is that...
Well, no, I don't think that that's what we're talking about, Mr. Bennett.
I guess it's a difference of opinion as to whether you think that there needs to be something done to the electric structure or not.
Correct. Well, we have these indecisive comments from a lot of different people about the electric rates, you know, how we arrive at it, and, you know, who determines the PPA and those things. And when you do this, when you formulate a utility commission, you'll take that burden off of the city council.
But if we formulate a commission to handle every aspect of the city council, what is the point of us sitting here? We didn't run for office to pass the burden on to somebody else. We ran for office so that we could do our best to set the city on a course that we think is going to be...
Okay, let's just lower the bill tonight. Let's do that.
See, that's what I'm saying.
Where do you want to get the money?
Well, here's the thing.
That's the difference of opinion, whether you think the rate needs lowered or not.
Here's the thing. If you... We could move to do that, Councilman Chris.
Not without amendment in the budget? You can't.
Well, and that's correct, too. That's correct, too. We need to find the money.
No, you can't.
If we're going to make an adjustment, we've got to find the money to do it. That's plain and simple.
We're going to be as reckless as Clifford, shooting from the hip here, making radical decisions.
Well, I don't think there's anything...
I don't think we should make that decision tonight.
Well, and it's a point taken. We can table it tonight and pick it up at our next meeting, but it's coupled with what we've just got done. We had this man in here to discuss this thing, to see what's the right direction to go. And it appears...
We're currently using what they suggest. They're the ones that put forth the structure we're using.
Not according to what I was told. Things raised that weren't saying...
Can I address... I'll talk.
Yes, Chair Recognizers, Dan, would you come?
I was present for this meeting.
Yes, he was.
With Sam, with Yule, with Larry. First of all, rate structure was not suggested by Yule. Rate structure was suggested by a consultant.
Yes, the consultant. And that's who he is implying suggested the commission.
Right. Um, Yule was, you know, he was asked on the... And Sam, Larry, tell me if I'm wrong. We correctly asked him. He thought the utility commission was a good idea. And he thought that it was, in light of the fact that he receives the citizens. And I think he's reading the stories and he's just going, you guys are having a lot of utility rate fights that you could essentially defer to utilities. And, you know, kind of like, you have citizens that come in here and everybody... Grady, you're right when you say this came up. Two to three percent of the population is the ones writing about the rates. It has a lot of times people that don't pay well, the people that... But at the same time, they just pirate their time at different meetings. I can go back in time and remember all the different times that your time was borrowed in two hours on a circling around the Mulberry, which I'll use here for a password. On this discussion that there's no finite answer that the board can give, whereas, kind of like the planning and zoning board, utility commission, as described by Yule, the city would give the utility commission a budget. We need this out of utility property every year to run the city. This is, you know, say 600,000 to the utilities, meaning store water, like, need to generate 600,000. I'm just using that as a random. And then the board would have to set its rates to make sure that that much revenue is produced. I mean, they're sort of limited in their scope, except they've got, I guess, to set a rate structure that comes up with that number. And whether that would be that we have a hookup charge like Seaman O'Donnell's, you know, of the basic, I think they're $23, Grady, correct me if I'm wrong, other utilities have... This group would essentially set the core rates. And when there are citizen complaints, that's where they would come first. Now, they would also have the right to come to you if they didn't like the utility commission. That was sort of the premise of the whole thing. Certainly doesn't take power away from the council, because anything the utility commission could do would have to be approved by the council. At the same time, it would take a lot of work off the council in that the utility commission would have one job. It would be to steady utilities.
Yes, my issue isn't necessarily with the commission. My issue is I think we're trying to fix something that doesn't currently need fixed.
Right.
I understand there's complaints about the rate, but I just figured up the rate on a well we pay with a different utility provider, and it's relative to your usage. That figured up to 17.17 cents per kilowatt hour.
I think here's what Yule told us, and again, Larry, Sam, tell me if I'm wrong. Rates aren't going down.
No.
No.
They're going up. If you want to limit the PPA, rates are going up. So if you're going to have a bad guy for the rate hike, utility commission would be the bad guy, if they're willing to do it, because rates are going to go up. And if you look, if we compare our rates to other cities, you'll affirm this. Ours are sticking on cheap.
Oh, wait a minute. Now I want to say something.
Yes, Chair Recognizers.
I moved my business out of this city, and along with my 33 employees, I moved to Rogersville because my utility bill for one month was 603 dollars. My first utility bill in Rogersville was 43 dollars.
But what's the difference? Kilowatt hours used.
That whole building, of course, is a known inefficient building.
But I did come to the city, in fairness, and I said, something's wrong over here. Why am I paying 603 dollars a month for utilities? I'm only running four computers and, I mean, I didn't have anything stuck in electricity over there. The city came out a couple of times and checked and checked, oh, no, everything's fine, everything's fine. And I thought, well, maybe I'm paying part of the bank's bill, because, you know, that may... No, no, we checked, we're not. So I tried, now, granted, this was several years ago. I tried to work with the city so I didn't have to move my business out of the city, but nobody cared. So I picked up my business and my 33 employees and went to Rogersville. And it's way cheaper in Rogersville, way cheaper.
Thank you. I hear this all the time.
I refuse to have utility bill conversation when you're looking at the dollar amount only, because it's all relative to your usage.
That's true.
Granted, it wouldn't matter what your usage was. It's going to be cheaper in Rogersville. They're served by Webster Electric, and they're probably within the top three of the cheapest in the state of Missouri.
Yeah, 500 and some odd dollars cheaper. That's a big...
That's a big difference.
Arguably, that's...
How much do you pay? You're on Seminole. How much do you pay?
It's relative to your usage. I pay about, if you count the... Well, I can figure mine if you give me a minute, but it's probably going to come up to between nine and nine and a half, nine and three quarters a cent.
That's what all of us is saying. Well, see, that's a big difference. So when you use, like, your electricity and everything, that balance is your bill now.
Mine? Mine's, it's relative to your usage. Mine's usually around 150. I'm very conservative with electricity. You put the pencil to it on a R rate, and it's probably going to be about 30, 40 bucks higher.
There's a man that I know that lives in a duplex in Seymour, and his electric bill, that's his utility bill, was 580-some dollars this month. But there's eight people that live in that duplex, and you can go by there 24 hours a day, and every light's on, the air conditioners are running, the windows open.
That's why I say I...
Mine's almost 400.
Is that Seymour's fault?
The utility commission is, these discussions, you don't have to waste your time with these stories. The utility commission, Alicia's, she would have a specialty board as a business person in town to address, like the planning and zoning.
Absolutely.
And then the utility commission, I would think to some degree, would fight on behalf of the A's.
Then the only reason that I'm hearing to have a utility board is to get people off our backs.
Well, it was essentially to relieve ourselves of the burden.
That might be a way to look at it, Councilman Carpenter.
I think it also eliminates the internal fighting on rates among the board itself. I think that's the bigger issue by trying to...
And they would do, they think the background, they would start looking into what other cities do and do all the education.
Because I understand that it could be a new creation, and there would have to be, you know, you have to learn, like...
Well, the point remains that it would be in the advice of this gentleman that we purchase our power from, that runs that thing, and he says that this is the best way to go. And for, if you want to service your city in the best way, he said, here's how to do it.
Are the other towns in Mudgemuck doing this?
There are.
Well, we do on everything else. We have to call Mansfield every morning, see what we need to do today.
There are others on his system that have this system in place. Yes, there are.
Yeah, a lot of them.
Well, okay, well, that's the mayor's take to you, and that's the suggestion of this man that came to visit with us. So if you don't like the advice, why, you know, we don't have to do the motion. But, or we can wait till we have this meeting next week, and after reviewing that, we can think about it then.
If we're going to make a decision now, there's no point in having a meeting next week pertaining to the very...
Well, that would be true. This would take care of the next meeting.
Ergo, the shooting from the hip comment on there.
We didn't use a gun.
And that was sort of a conversation point, too, was that you can eliminate this PPA discussion, which, and I'm not criticizing anyone, which I just think is a very futile discussion, because it's one that would really cause the city a lot of serious financial hardship.
It would.
And Yule read the story, and Yule was giving his take on that. I mean, Yule was directly responding to reading these conversations, and he said, and essentially Yule said, you know, the fact that you guys are trying to eliminate the PPA is just insanity. That's what he said. And he said, you know, maybe if you guys could direct this toward a utility commission, maybe you could avoid this PPA conversation among the board in a budget study that's going to take a lot of time and probably in a decision that we just can't do it. Because we do create the PPA. I mean, we are the PPA.
We do, we set the PPA.
What the PPA does essentially is it subsidizes the utility cost of the city. It is the people's cost. I mean, that's from infrastructure. And you have to have it. It has to be subsidized by someone. The city naturally can't subsidize it. You have to pass that cost down. It's sort of like these people in rural areas that start putting up panels and having utility farms, and they're not paying for the infrastructure of the lives that is on their places. The people who are paying regular rates are. And, you know, again, there are... He talked about different ways you can mitigate that with a connection fee. For some of these businesses or folks that have six meters, you don't pay 20 bucks a piece on them if you decide to bump the hookup cost up. He gave a lot of options, and these are things that the utility commission could have the time to set around and study. And that way, we wouldn't be as much shooting from the hip. He says it's natural, as Yule said, you guys are elected individuals, and it's your job to fight the people who elected you. So when Nadine, for example, comes and says, I really want utility rates dropped, she's doing that because her people are telling her that.
Sure.
Yeah, I've heard Alicia's, people telling me that all the time.
And she's hearing the stories like Alicia told, so she's looking for solutions. It would be nice if those concerns could be voiced to a third party, since it would be the utility commission. They could weigh their minds and hopefully have the trust of the alternative, because although the mayor would appoint those people or would name those people, they got to be approved by you.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So, anyway, that's my take from meeting. Sam, Larry, did I do a decent job explaining this?
I think you did a good job, Dan, of that deliberation that we had, and it took a couple of hours. And he answered the questions as they were given to him, and was very knowledgeable, most knowledgeable fellow I've seen in a while on power and what we do with it.
He noted that he works for you, and Sam controls our vote. There's now 13 members from the PUA.
He does.
And Sam is our voting member, and Sam's one of his 13 bosses. Direct power. Any profits per se that the PUA generates, we are PUA. It comes back to members. And it's not like we're buying it from Amherst, from an Amherst. We're not... The consortium isn't running this thing. It's us. We're running our own cooperative almost in our own office.
Who's the latecomers to the kind of random question, but it's always been eleven? Who's 12 and 13?
Mountain View.
Why do they use 12 and 13? It's a whole state.
Oh, okay. That's just in our contract as well.
And Mountain View, they started...
Mountain View joined.
And they went to the other one that Dave was in, and they learned the hard way that it was a bad call. And Yule was explaining this. And he was supposed to go to Mansfield that day, and he stuck around an extra hour with us just because he wanted to help us.
Well, if we had the commission, say, if we set the budget, say, 600,000 dollars, well, we've got to keep it within that, so I don't know what would be...
Well, the...
...bad about having a commission.
The commission would set the rate and would do the best thing for the citizens at large, and we would know that we've got the money to facilitate what they did for the city, because we set the budget.
Correct. The utility commission can do nothing but hit the number of budgets.
Beyond what we give them.
They're very limited.
I make a motion.
I guess how that rate is spread. I mean, they would determine if there needs to be an industrial hike, or determine if there needs to be a residential hike, or determine if there's a business hike that burden is placed upon that.
Right. So there could be...
I'll make a motion to have a commission board.
I don't know whether it is or not.
It's not like that they can... Well, it's not like that they have to get us clear up on the budget and break the city. I like that. They have to stay within the budget.
It's them breaking the city or us breaking the city. What's the difference?
Well, it could have already been broke, but it ain't. So...
So we have... Is that in a form of a motion, Nadine? Okay, we've got a motion on the floor for the... To establish a utility commission, the five members, that would be five people that the mayor would present to you possibly at the next meeting?
Yeah, that we have to approve.
That you would approve as a council. That you would approve, as a council, that's correct. Do I hear a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
How long are we gonna have to spend getting these people abreast of the utility situations? We're not talking about just the electric, we're talking about water and sewer inclusive. Are we gonna?
Whoever would be on this commission is going to have to be very dedicated individuals who are willing to give a lot of their time.
It'll take some time to do this right, and it will.
You don't like being on a corner.
But, my, my question here.
It is, and that's my concern with creating a commission is, is.
That's where it's kind of up to you guys, and you determine these five members, it needs to be people in trust.
Have, have we talked to any of the other cities that's got them, that's got a, that's got the commission?
We've talked to Yule, and, and.
No, I'm talking about the people that are using those. We need to find out how it's working for other people before we jump in the, before we jump out of the boat.
Yule says that the cities that are using it works very nicely.
Well, we're, we're doing this on the advice of a man that we buy power from, Jim. It's not our idea, actually, it's his idea, we just think it's a good one.
But some of the other cities haven't done it.
Some of the other cities are, are probably going to turn to it, because if, if you look at this thing realistically, you know, this board will do the studies, they'll look at reviews that we have here before us that have been set up for the city, and tell us, you know, realistically, here's what we've got to do, and we'll stay within this dollar amount that you set. So, it's, it's the right thing to do, in my, in my opinion.
And none of it'll be biased decisions that they come to based on the fact that this commission is going to be comprised of some of our largest users.
Yes.
I think that's up to you.
We, we'll.
I mean, that all comes down to the funding process.
That's right. Who we appoint, and you have to approve. So, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Could I have a roll, roll call vote, please?
I'm not in favor at the time, but I think you need to be more specific on the approval of these positions. Is it a majority? Is it a two-thirds? Is it three-quarters? What, what is gonna constitute approval?
Oh, I, I don't understand the question.
What is gonna constitute approval, board approval, of these appointees of this commission that's to be formed?
Well, the constitutional method of, of approving anything by this council is by a majority vote. Mr. Bennett?
I think something this serious shouldn't just be a majority vote, I think it should be a large majority. I think you should have at least three out of four in a, in agreement before you elect someone to this position.
I don't think that's a bad idea, put that in motion, that you have to have three or four council members approve the appointments to the board. Could they do that call?
Yeah. We don't have any ordinances about the, the work creating a commission.
The last thing we want is for us to be a split, split tie broken by the mayor on a utility commission, because then.
Well, we're, the only thing we're doing here, Mr. Bennett, is we're establishing the right to move forward to establish a commission. The members you would have to approve, I've just heard you ask, and I've just heard Mr. Link say, that we could add that, amend the motion to, to say that, if Councilman Chris wishes to do that, because she initiated the motion. Do you wish to do that?
Yes.
Yes. So, there you go, you got your, your two-thirds vote for every member that would be appointed to this commission. Three-quarters, you will, right. You've got to have three votes out of the four to approve these members. So, she's amended her motion to say that. Are we ready to vote? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Gertie Bennett?
Not at this time.
Mary Carpenter?
Yes.
Name, Chris?
Yes.
Jim Ashley?
Not tonight. I think it's far too important an issue to just jump in.
I would like to, to hear how it is, or how it's working for some of the other municipalities that's implemented it.
Inasmuch as what I've heard the motion say, and it's been amended to, to include your input, Mr. Bennett, then I think that you have got your, your will imposed on this motion already. So, in light of that, and because Mr. Yule said it's the right thing to do for the city, and he is more educated than I, and that's the only thing that he does, I'm gonna vote with the major, with the favorables, and the motion passes. But the members will have to have three votes. So, all we've done here tonight is decide that we want a utility commission, and now then, I will bring before you at our next meeting some names, and you'll have to approve those one by one. So, motion passes.
I don't know that two weeks would be an ample amount of time to present the vast majority of a board to handle such a task. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but I just, I just, I just don't want you rushed into your appointees, thinking that you have to bring those to the board by next, next meeting, because I just don't think two weeks is, is a great deal of time.
Well, we may not get them all appointed at the next meeting, Mr. Bennett. We, we may have to take two or three meetings to get all these people appointed. But, we, we have, we have it in place, we're going to establish a commission, you all have to approve the members. So, you still have control of how this thing goes forward. All right, I'm gonna move on to, into one other thing that I have to present to you tonight. You know, since we changed to this, this five-eighths, or a forty-hour work week, it, it appears to me that we have had some indecisiveness of, of how the work schedule is being complied with, and Sam and I have visited about this. But, as I look back over these days off, that the city has been presented, we have an average of thirty-five to forty-five days off every month. And I didn't go through every month since the first year, but that was under the old plan. So, it would appear to me that if cities running without those forty-five days a month, possibly we might look at lessening our workforce to, to save the city some money.
Did you miss the part that every project that's been brought up in the last six months, say, has not been completed due to lack of manpower and time?
Well, it, it's also not been completed to lack of time spent on the project. How long have we been working on this water line? How long has it been in place?
Total?
The more appropriate.
Total number of hours there, or number of days?
Since, since.
Because you can't count the number of days, because there's so many other jobs that our guys have to go take care of.
Well, they do, Jim, and that's, the point's well taken. But, how many, how many months has it been since we initiated this project?
And that's exactly why, when we have a project like that, you are far better off to take bids and have somebody come in and do it, because our guys have got their hands full.
We're doing one, one, I know they're working on the line.
You, you really want me to know, you want to know.
And they're doing the sidewalk, yeah, I really want to know.
Yeah, and they're working over at the citywide cleanup, and they're setting poles, and they're setting, and they're putting in, and they're, and people move in and out. I, I, I don't have time to sit here and give you a job description of everybody.
Please.
Our guys are busy.
I haven't had a complete loss as to why we have employees resigned. Can somebody abreast me as to what is, what is occurring here?
Well, I think that Ms. Miller resigned for a much better opportunity.
No.
And JB, well.
We're not lying to the same Ms. Miller, I suppose.
Well, you know what, she, she had a much better opportunity where she's going, and I told her I could not, I could not deny her that opportunity, it was, it was.
I would say I would agree with you, she probably has a better opportunity down the road.
Yeah.
Well, at, at where she's going.
I'll, I'll agree with you there.
Yes. And some, some of the rest of us might have better opportunities, too, maybe, maybe. It, it remains to be seen. So, you know, I would just say this, that if, if we looked at a layoff, we would start with the least, or, or at the last hire, and there, we were, and I asked for a list of those, and there are two, Chuck Smith, which is here with us tonight, and Lance Davis, which is in training for lineman. And if, I really, it'd be the chair's opinion that we're, we're investing a lot of money in Mr. Davis to qualify him to do line work, and so he, he wouldn't be the logical one.
So, I don't think the police want to do that, line work, I mean, we have to retain those, at some level, some level, to do the work.
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's not what I'm suggesting, I'm just saying that if I look at the policy and procedure manual, it says that the last hire, if you're gonna have a layoff, that's, that's where you go. So, and I'm not, you know, the council directs the way we go, but I'm just saying if we've got that many days taken off. And I have asked for a schedule. In, in my opinion, Mr. Burke should be preparing the schedule, because I've asked for the balance of the month, and I've been told that they can't prepare the schedule, the work schedule, for October, because they don't know when the employees are gonna take off.
What, take off for what?
Well, isn't the schedule already made? It's eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Eight to five, Monday through Friday.
That's the schedule, good and right.
They're taking off.
But we don't, but as they take off, that, those days are, are taken out of the work schedule.
But I understand these people probably had things planned for quite a while before their work schedule was, was interrupted and changed, so they might not have a choice but to take time off.
Well, and, and for a month or so, I could understand that, Mr. Bennett, but as an administrative standpoint, you can't plan work when you don't know who's gonna be at work.
You can't plan your life when you don't know what your hours are gonna be.
Let's reduce, let's reduce the, the manpower, let's reduce the force, and see how much easier it is to plan work with two guys.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to table this tonight.
Very good. Well, we can, we can table this, and.
Craziest idea I've heard.
We, we, we can table this for the, for the time being, and consider it at a future time. It doesn't have, but I'm just saying that that's the way you approach layoffs, is you start at the bottom, take the least or the last man hired, and, and go from there. So, we're gonna table this for tonight. Now, the chair recognizes Chuck Smith.
So, don't you start looking for a job?
No, you don't need to start looking for a job.
We're, we're just under discussion tonight, Chuck. We're, we're just discussing how we might better facilitate the work for the city. We need these jobs done, we need the work performed, we need to see sidewalks poured, we need to see completed, and we need to see the water pipes laid in place, because there's other projects that we'd like to see done.
I'd like to, I'd like to see the projects done, too, and, you know, and you drive down on Foot and Street, you're seeing, you're seeing the sidewalk growing, I mean, that shows progress.
Right.
You know, and here, if we're doing a good job, then I, I'm sitting here, and you're mentioning my name as far as being laid off.
I'm just saying you're the last hired, Chuck.
Yes, sir, I am, being last, both last hired.
And the policy and procedure manual, as you've got, when you received, when you were employed, said that the last one hired would be the first one considered for layoff.
Which depends on who Mrs. Table, it could be the next one. We're taking applications for the replacement of JB's position currently. I don't understand why we're seeking employees at the same time we're considering reducing our workforce.
Well, you've invested a lot of money in Lance, going to school, and you've invested a lot of money in me. I've got a DS three, I've got a wastewater license, I got treatment license. That's cost you guys a lot of money for me to do that.
Okay, that's been done since you've been here at the city?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was not aware of that.
Yeah, I've got a lot of licenses that you guys pay for, you've invested a lot in me.
Right.
And, you know, I, yeah, I've gone to, you know, school for building special, and, and I think since I've been here, I've done a good job. I think I've been a lot of projects done. And I think I've earned the right to know, and to, to have a heads up if I need to go look for employment.
Well, I'm just throwing this out as a consideration, Chuck, tonight. There's nothing been done, we've decided to table it for this evening, nothing's been done. I just threw it out for consideration, since we had an average of thirty-five to forty-five days taken off every month. So, we, we need to look at that from an administrative standpoint, and see how we can do it better. So, that's what I, what I'm pointing out to the council tonight.
You gotta understand my concern, I've got a kid in college, and it's alarming to hear this kind of talk, so I.
That essentially implies that we're gonna penalize people for, for sticking around and building up those days off that they've acquired over the years and years and years. That's why people can take off the days they can, because they've been here ten, fifteen, twenty, and thirty years. They've, they've built that up as a benefit.
And we do have, I, I see that one person has taken a vacation, it's been for the whole week, and, and that's the way I think it should be. But, I just point this out to the council, to say this, that at the beginning of the year, if you have all those vacations turned in, and you say, okay, the most senior person gets first consideration, that'd be Mitch, you know, he chooses his week that he can take vacation, or his two weeks, probably got two weeks, I imagine, but, or maybe, maybe more. But, but anyway, the, you, you choose that, and you put that into the work schedule, and so you begin to plan around that, and then here comes the next one. And maybe they can't take that week that they wanted, because a senior, more senior employee took that. So, then you look at that, and you plug it in to your work schedule, and you plan around that. Sure. And then you've got days for emergencies, we, we know that that happens. So, that's, that's the only thing that I'm saying, is that if we can, if we can get the work done, possibly with fewer days off, well, I think that would be a good thing. I guess that's the point I might.
Work for certain is not gonna accomplish more.
Mitch has got something to say.
Oh, Mitch.
Our jobs are different than factory workers.
Absolutely.
We're on call twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So, is it fair that we have to take a whole week for, you know, say, for example, we wanted to go hunting Saturday, you know, so we had to work all day. So, we decided, you know, no, we'll just wait and take off, since we worked all day Saturday, we'll take off Mondays, build on instead. But, you know, what you're saying, that, that, you know, that you want, pardon my French, nigger us to get what you want, that not what we.
I certainly wouldn't say that. But I would say that Mitch, every situation, it can be considered on, on the situation. So, if, if something comes up, an emergency, of course, you got to, and it takes something off the time you've been planning, it's certainly agreeable and allowable to, to have you take off at another time, because the emergency has to be dealt with as they come up, and that's true.
Yeah, but, I mean, I think if they've got earned time off, and, and something comes up and they desire a day off, I, I think as long as it works with the scheduling, there's no reason not to.
There is no doubt in my mind, if Mitch wants to go deer hunting on Monday, and there's a pole breaks off in the windstorm, he's giving that deer hunting trip up to come up here and go back to work, aren't you? And there's no question about it.
Right, Jim, and I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that.
We, we don't give them anywhere near the credit they deserve, and, I mean, I've seen them out in the middle of the night, in the water, and the wet, and the, the wind, and the rain, and I've never heard one of them complain.
Strip them down and close them in here tight.
I have never heard one of them complain.
Make this box as small that every one of them leave.
True enough.
Until here lately, and they've got reason to complain.
So, that, I throw that out for consideration, and that's all. So, that's pretty well all I had to, all I had to talk about. Mr. Link? Thank you for that short. Thank you for that short report. Let's see, let's start down here with Mr. Bennett.
I don't suppose you don't wanna hear another word out of me for the evening. I'll pass.
Very good. Councilman Carpenter.
Most everything has been covered. Well, I covered it all. The recording equipment that we bought, is it installed now?
Yes, ma'am.
We're recording.
Do, shouldn't we not tell everyone that comes in that they're being recorded when they speak?
You don't have to. I mean, you can't want to, but in the state of Missouri, only one side has to know.
Okay, that was my question.
Anything further?
There would be no reason not to, I thought that would be appropriate. Simple sign, we should take care of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could place a sign back up here that would be visible to everybody.
I just think, you know, a lot of these people come in here and talk, and if they knew they were being recorded, they may not say anything.
Sometimes it matters, huh?
Sometimes it matters.
Sometimes it might.
Wanna get a sign made in?
Yes, please.
Interacted in...
I think that we could just make something in the house and let them know.
Well, I think so.
Stick it on the wall.
Yeah, that's all it needs.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Councilman Crisp.
Well, I do wanna say this. I was at Ray's one day, and there's this person in there. She'd worked here a long time. And she said the reason that the city worked like they worked the hours, that they could not get along. So, is that true or not? Said that workers could not get along.
I think a bunch of workers would get along by...
Someone worked here.
Was probably why they are a former employee. Perhaps.
See, you just make a laugh out of everything people says, you know, but no, that was told to them.
I believe it was told to you, and I was being serious. Perhaps that's why they're no longer an employee.
Well, they was still an employee here. They are still an employee here.
They are employees. See, you, I misunderstood you. I took it as it was a former employee.
And that's what they said, so I just wanted to bring that out.
No, that's not true.
Well, I don't know.
Never been tired.
Huh?
We've never been tired.
Chuck, when you went to work, there was more complaints on you. Oh, my goodness, 'cause you come in, I'm just telling you the truth.
You're not telling me anything I don't know?
Yeah, so I just wanna be truthful.
I don't think you...
Yeah, right.
You're absolutely right. But, you know...
And I think you're doing a good job, or I tell you.
I appreciate that.
I tell you.
Through time, people grow together, people grow in pace. Anytime you introduce a new person to the group.
Yeah.
And, you know, when me and Lance come in, you know, I was the odd man out.
Yeah.
There was an adjustment period there, but we've made it through that adjustment period.
Good, that's good. Because I know it takes everybody to get along.
We've never been tired.
Well, good.
We work together, we go to church together. You know, we didn't like each other, we sure wouldn't be doing that.
But that's what I said. And the only thing I've got, I would like to see the voicemail taken off on our city phone. Every time I call over here, the voicemail answering machine comes on.
Our system, when they call in, it gives you a multiple of options to go to.
And why don't we have a voicemail? I mean, the voicemail answering machine.
People can leave a message at when we're not here.
But usually, if they call you, they're wanting, they're wanting something. They're not wanting to call back six times.
They're busy in there, I mean, working the winter, the camp sometimes, you know.
Anytime my workers is too busy to answer the phone, they're not gonna be there long.
I don't have any problem getting through up here to City Hall. Now, just to be honest with you, I just don't. I don't have any reason to lie about it. Whenever I call up here, I talk to somebody.
They must have your number coming in.
You reckon they do?
Well...
Yeah, I don't know, but every time I call.
The complaint, and I'll kinda switch hats here. I've heard people on the Seymour side, see, there's no automated voice message system. There's no press one to go here, press two to go there. At five o'clock when the office closes, the calls are forwarded to whomever is on the call. So there's none of that, period. Likewise, on the fifteenth, when bills are due. On the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, when it's getting close to cutoff. On the second, third, fourth, when everybody's checks have come in and they're ready to pay their bill. You get the opposite end, people complaining that they calling it rings and rings and rings and rings, and no one answers, and there's no voice message system, the legal message.
You think I'm wrong, shouldn't we call them anyway?
After hours, that would make sense.
No, I'm talking about during the day when there's an elevated number of phone calls, because it's a high activity day. There's no, there's nothing in place to intercept those excess calls, and it just rings busy, or it just keeps ringing and nobody answers it. And that frustrates people equally so.
So, is that busy on the phone?
Is it a high volume day, or is this any day of the week?
Anytime I've ever called.
Yes, sir, phone calls mainly because there's multiple calls coming in at one time. Sometimes, you know, there may not be any, but when it rings, it seems like everybody calls at once.
You don't have a roll, maybe we need to get a rollover line?
We have three lines.
And they're all busy?
Sometimes. I mean, if they're, yeah. Or, you know, if Shelley's by herself, she's in the bathroom, or she's...
Well, yes, she can be in there all day though. But I don't mind.
She puts people on hold and answers the phone when she...
Well, I'd rather be put on hold.
I don't know.
Leave a message.
I ain't saying there aren't plenty of people that complain about that. I'm just saying, you know, there's still gonna be people complaining even if it just rang, 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 and nobody answered it personally.
Maybe it would be noteworthy to just ask Sam to talk to Lisa and Shelley to say, you know, be a little more prudent about answering the calls and put them on hold.
Are you guys saying that they just let it ring, and they don't answer the phone?
No, it goes to answering machine.
The issue is this, when you dial the number, and correct me if I'm wrong, when you dial the number, if you don't speak to a tangible person immediately, you have to push one or two to direct your call to the front or to the back. And some people have a problem with that because they wanna speak to a tangible person and not a computer.
Well, that don't, you know, punch the buttons, that's no big deal. That's just after you punch the button. The line, I mean, you put your...
The complaint that I've always gotten in that regard is that, the city of Seymour, we're not Springfield, we don't need an answering.
Well, see, some people know, but that's just ever, everybody's like that anymore. You know, punch one to get, two, three, really?
No.
Nope, it is not.
Not if you call the main line, it's not, there's still some that answers.
So, Councilman Crisp, what is your pleasure?
Well, I'd like to be seen, taken off, is what I'd like to see.
You can change it and try it, and quite possibly might get equal amount of complaints.
Can you put automatic, just on there, please hold?
I don't think we can do that, no. No, just automatically, please hold. We have to, I mean, Shelley's all time, with another customer, can you hold please? I mean, every time I'm back there, she is, you know, answering the phones.
She does that a lot, I've noticed she does that.
There's three here, and you have to go to the answering machine. There's three here, there's three here now.
I mean, whenever, I get phone calls up front, if I'm on the phone, you know, I'll do the same thing. You know, or if I don't get to it in time, I will, you know, you can tell her ID, I'll call back.
If someone calls, they wanna talk to you, you know.
You want to what?
Talk to you if someone calls.
It would be so.
They wanna talk to somebody.
And then if Shelley doesn't get the call in time, she will also call that person back.
I think David had a question or call that, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, David, I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
You have to have that system in place anyway at nighttime, right?
I believe so, yes.
So unless you wanna have someone transfer it every night, and make sure that you know how to do it. You might as well just leave it alone like this, because you need the system in place at nighttime calls.
Is that what triggers it, like in an outage or service water leak or something? I mean, is there, is there a prompting on there to trigger it to call, or? There's no actual needed mechanism within that system, though? Other than the recording giving them instructions?
Well, you gotta have, you gotta have something giving instructions to what to do.
So, Councilman Crisp, what we're saying is that probably it'd have to be in place because after-hours calls, to be just maybe a little more aware of that?
I don't think, I think you're okay with the automated, the pressing the one or two.
Yeah, that's, that's no problem, because you have to do that, yeah.
But, I mean, it's just, I don't know what more Lisa and Shelley or I can do. I mean, we answer, I mean, we don't just sit there and go, oh, I'm not gonna answer that.
Well, I'm sure you can do that.
I'll venture to say that the bulk of that issue would be on high activity days, be it...
Cut-off time.
Yeah, cut-off time, the bills, bills...
And that being true, what is, what is your pleasure on that? You just wanna say to be more prudent about trying to answer these people and put them on hold so we'll be right back to you? Okay. Very good. Anything else?
I wouldn't think I get called the wrong time every time.
Well, maybe we need to check that and make sure that we're doing that.
I mean, Lisa was on vacation last weekend, it was crazy last week, I will tell you that, because I was shut off.
Or perhaps you could lay one of them off and see if the other two can answer the phone in a more quickly time manner.
That's anti-productive, Councilman Bennett. Anything else, Councilman Crisp? Councilman Ashley?
I've just got one thing. For lack of a better word, I feel a little bit blindsided about this commission tonight. Was this discussed among any of the other city officials?
Mr. Burke and myself is the only ones that were there, and Dan was there, who else was there? Mitch was there, Mitch was there. Yes, Mitch was there. So that's just...
Well, I mean, after the meeting.
No, no, this is the first time we've voiced this to the council. And besides, I mean...
Of course, with the two of you have heard of it, basically, I think is what Jim's question is.
Right.
I talked to them.
Well, this was something that was suggested by Yule.
I'm not an expert on the matter by no means, but it seems logical that the one with the most experience would have at least been queued up on this scenario. But I guess logic didn't apply in so many circumstances.
I would say that, I don't know, you sent a meeting with Yule, is that right, Sam?
Yes.
Actually, Yule just was in town, and he wanted to come by and see me, and I put it in my weekly report. And I sent the word out, and you saw it.
I did, and I came to the meeting. So, Grady, if you get the email like the other council members do, you received it also, but it was at the time when you were working, and I understand that.
I'm speaking to the consideration of a form of a commission.
Yeah, I hadn't heard a word.
I kinda felt blindsided as Jim did.
I hadn't heard a word about a commission until tonight.
Correct. Well, you know, we asked for the man to come, he came. He told us what he saw and what he felt we needed, and we moved to in that direction. I mean, if you're, if you don't think that man knows what he's doing...
Oh, I never intended that.
Then we should call somebody else. But the thing is, we haven't really consummated anything until you've elected these people to sit on this board. We, Dan.
I'd like to address this subject, I, you have to watch mine, but I'll address it. I mean, I think that's one of the problems of previous councils, is you guys have sat around and talked about stuff outside the parameter of this meeting. This isn't my place for it, I mean, without, why should you talk?
Well, there are, there are legal ways to talk.
Well, I understand.
I mean, but it is illegal, but it is illegal to talk about what you're gonna do at a meeting and then go do it.
Definitely.
Huh? It's illegal to what? I mean, I'm a person as well in the sunshine law, I, what you said doesn't make sense.
Under the sunshine law, a meeting takes place when a majority or a quorum of a public government body gathers to discuss or vote on public issues. Therefore, if less than a quorum of the public body meets to discuss public business, it is not a meeting, as defined under the sunshine law. However, the sunshine law will apply to meetings of groups with less than a quorum when the entity is deliberately attempting to evade the sunshine law. For example, a public governmental body may not purposely meet in groups with less than a quorum to discuss public business and then ratify those decisions in a subsequent public meeting.
I don't, I don't think this is, and I'm kinda speaking...
I am not alleging that. I am not alleging that. I asked a simple question, and that's all I wanted to know. And I got an answer.
I talked to Dan because I was gonna come over here, but I couldn't.
I mean, I think that Larry, in his, I mean, he's following protocol, which is, I guess he came with the idea to come up with the utility commission and brought it up. And this, I mean, unless he's been gapping with somebody else on the council, I, I, I'll be quiet. This meeting just happened, wasn't it, my Thursday?
Yeah.
It was, yeah. And Mitchell was there, Sam was there, I was there.
It wasn't like a secret, black ops meeting.
No, no, and it was publicly sent out to everybody, Jim. I mean, you should've gotten an email too. You didn't, you didn't get the email?
I, I'm not talking about the meeting. I'll simply ask if any of the rest of the board knew anything about the commission before tonight.
Yep, I did, I talked to Dan.
I did not.
And that's, that's all, that's all I asked, Larry.
Okay. Well, well taken.
Now, the meeting came Friday and asked me, I was in the HR.
I did, 'cause I was gonna come.
And I thought some of the things were said, I guess, but I mean, I'm not a member of the council. I was just talking to the board. Ten minute conversation of that.
Councilman Ashley, do you have?
I'm done.
You're done. Very good. Anything else to come before this meeting for the good of Seymour?
Softball field lights, who's in charge of shutting those off at night when somebody rents them or such?
Usually, one of our officers will shut it off. You get them shut off sometimes?
Last night, they were on all evening, and I ended up getting out of bed and going and shutting them off eventually.
I had left work and it'd be shut off, I'll take care of that.
I was hesitant to immediately, I didn't know if somebody just hadn't arrived yet, so I kinda drugged it out.
I instructed them to turn it off, and if they weren't, I'll take, I'll take...
Typically, typically, it's the police that do. I wasn't sure whether it was an emergency, I didn't wanna call and bother, but I hated to shut them off if somebody shut them off and ten minutes later, someone shows up to use the field.
What happened was there was people that made arrangements to use the field, and then they called back later and changed it to the night instead of last night. And the police department didn't get the word. So we turned the lights on, and I instructed the night officer to make sure to turn them off later. And I didn't know what to do then.
Wasn't a big deal, I was just apprehensive as to whether to shut them off or not and ruffle someone's feathers, because they paid to use the facility, and then we shut the lights off on them. Thank you.
I have one other thing too, that I might just bring up before the council. We've talked about sick leave, and I noticed in the, in my, what I do have on the days that are to be worked this month, I've noticed that we've got a few sick leave times taken. I'm not saying they don't have the right to take those. I'm just wondering, are we getting reports on those, Sam, I guess? For the sick leave?
Are you talking about doctor's excuse?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
We require a doctor's excuse every day somebody's gone sick?
If people take off from work.
If they go to the doctor.
If they go to the doctor.
They are bringing them back, yes.
If it's a, if it's something like, you know, if the employee is impaired and he's taking treatments, then we wanna know if he's able to come back and do his work.
Yes, that makes sense.
So that's, that's good for the city, it's good for the employee.
I was, I was asking if it's requisite that they have a doctor's excuse in order to use a sick day?
No, of course not.
Some, some people aren't gonna go to the doctor just because they're sick, and they just take the day off and get over it.
Well, and true enough. The, we talked about revising this instrument. This is the policy and procedure manual. And I really feel like we need to take a time, when the council can come together, look at this. We probably wouldn't get through the whole thing in one night, but it does need to be looked at and see if it needs revision. I think Sam's been doing some...